Call this meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Jameson.
Paul? Layland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Trelka?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here. Please join us in a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First of all, entertaining a motion on the agenda as proposed or amended?
So moved and seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? The agenda is approved. Next, we will move on to public comments. If there's anybody here from the public that wishes to address the board on, just come up to the podium and state your name and address.
This is my first time over here. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
My name is Carl Schaefer. I live in Eagle Center. I have a big metropolis out south of town on Kimball Avenue. This is a picture of your road grader done. I've got lots more. You'd like to see them? Well, you can pass it around. There's more pictures. I don't want to repair it. I'm seventy, going to be seventy-nine in March, and I'm not going out there with a shovel and repairing what the road grader tore all the hell. Pardon my French. But I figure you guys have a responsibility to do the right thing. We'll see what happens.
I probably shouldn't engage in this, but I was going to say, have you talked to our county engineer's office prior to coming here? Or is this your first time to?
I tried to. I went down there, and they told me to come here to the meeting.
Oh, okay.
We had to wait till the frost is out of the ground before we could get out there. Where I'd like the county to use to come out there, I don't know how you do it, but to repair that. It pretty tore up. So.
We've seen.
I appreciate any help I can get.
What was your address again, Carl?
Excuse me?
What was your address?
Asking.
Your address.
Oh, my address, 12049 Kimball Avenue. I'm just south of the stop signs there in Eagle Center. There you go. This is what I'm talking about, gentlemen, and I was astounded by it, actually, when the snow finally melted away. I had to wait till some warmer weather so it unfreezed, so I could move some of it. Didn't want to move. So I thought, well, I better get some help.
Glad you're here, but I was going to say, Kathy, would you maybe not during this part, but I was going to say during your update, maybe you'd be able to address some of your question?
I apologize, ma'am. I cannot hear you.
I, Kathy usually does an update for us as part of the agenda just a few minutes later, and I wondered if maybe she'd comment as to this, if you'd want to stick around a little bit and hear her update on that. All right. Appreciate that.
You bet.
And have you, have you left your phone number with our office?
Area code 3192319695.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So that's all I have, but you guys can separate yourself where you want to help. A taxpayer or you don't. We'll find out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else from the public in the room wish to adjust to the board on something that's not an agenda item? All right. Is there anybody online on Zoom that wishes to address the board? All right. Hearing none, we will move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and let the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against various settlements of such claims as allowed.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Michelle?
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today, and there is a change from the printout that you received on Friday. The total payment will be $111,000.968 and 55 cents. We are removing an invoice to Pace Software Systems. Just need some more work to get that how we need it to be. And that also impacts the 60-40 fund. So our total payments from the 60-40 fund today will be $2,650.94. I believe everything appears to be in order. If you have any questions, let me know.
All right. All right. This is a resolution. If there are no questions, a discussion. Roll call, please, Mr. Jameson.
Paul?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is adopted. We will now move on to receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, engineer. I was telling Mr. Schaefer on the way down here that we, we have received a number of complaints, such as his, this year. A little bit more than usual, especially considering how short the winter was. Most of that has to do with the heavy snow and the unthawed ground conditions. The unthawed shoulders and the unthawed four slope. We got that very heavy snow. It did take quite a bit of downward force from our plows, you know, more than a light snow would have. So a light snow could just be plowed off, and it's blowing away as we're plowing it, for example. The heavier wet snow that we experienced in those two weeks in January did, more force was needed by the snow plows, downward force on the shoulder as well as the four slope. When the shoulders are unthawed, our maintenance superintendent tells me that the blade operator, whether it's a truck or a motorator, they don't have the feel of where that blade is. If it's unthawed, they can be gouging some of the, the top surface of the lawn or the turf, the grass. This, we have had a few, a number of calls because this has happened throughout the county, of course, from that event. I then proceed to tell people that this is our, we've had this easement for 150 years. We are not a lawn service, unfortunately. In most cases, there's not much we can, we will be doing about it. It's just the way it is. It's a, you know, a circumstance of us plowing the snow and the conditions that were existed during that snowfall. Can I answer any questions about that?
I, I don't need an answer necessarily right now, but I will probably follow up and just to get an idea of, if we were to, if we were to perform those duties, what would that cost be? I'm not expecting, again, I'm not expecting an answer right now, but I also recognize that we're, we're performing the work, the necessary work of plowing those streets. The negative, negative side of that is we're frankly messing up folks' lawns. To me, it seems there might be an opportunity for us to, to correct that. I get that we've got easements, but yeah, I'm just, I'm curious as to what the cost would be. So I can follow up later to get a more real number.
Yeah, okay. Appreciate an update.
Okay. I did want to show you a few slides today about our construction out on Cedar Wopsy Road. And our contractor started work about eight days ago. So they came in and got busy right away, which is, which is wonderful. The first order of work is always signing, of course, and then putting up our erosion control fences, those types of activities. Then removing the guardrail because eventually after the deck has been removed and replaced, these approach panels have to be, are removed and replaced as well. Then they got right to work, removing the, the deck. This project removes the concrete above the beams, and we are, we are not replacing the beams. So it's not a total bridge replacement. It's, it's just removing the deck and replacing it with, with new concrete. So here they are removing the concrete, hammering that out, and then removing the rebar and the concrete. You can see here they made good progress. These were taken last week. And then here we have, I believe, just a very short piece remains down here at the, the east end. Excuse me, the west end. Work will continue to be removing concrete and rebar from, this is Crane Creek that the bridge is crossing over. And they are continuing on, and then next week we'll be taking elevations on these beams, and then work will continue. I'll be showing you more pictures as we go along here with our construction. Can I answer any questions about that?
Is there a good time to come out and maybe see some of this project?
Anytime, as long as the weather is good, the contractor should be out there working. If you'd like to see the, for example, the concrete, the new concrete deck being replaced, we can let you know when that will be. Probably, you know, next month possibly or several weeks away.
Yeah, no, I'd appreciate knowing when that happens.
Thank you.
All right. Any other department heads?
Morning, Board. Caitlin Nimer, Public Health Director. I just have been busy with kind of all the things that other department heads have been busy with, but I had a little bit of kind of good news I wanted to share this morning. Last Friday, we had the Give Kids a Smile Day, which is a partnership with Kimball and Beecher Family Dentistry to provide free dental care to children between the ages of one and 13. And our I Smile Coordinator, Brenda Reiken, shared with me that in the six hours that we partnered together to host this Give Kids a Smile Day event, they saw 137 children in that period of time, which results in $73,884 in oral health services to children here in the Cedar Valley. And so that's, this is kind of an exciting event that we do with Kimball and Beecher. It's a little bit unfortunate that we need to do it because we do have, you know, kids that don't have access, regular access to oral health care, but it is kind of a, a nice thing that we can do within a partnership in our community to give back.
Excellent.
So I wanted to share that with you all.
Is that kind of a record number that you know of or?
I actually don't know how that compares to previous years, but I do know that they had a waiting list for the day. So there, they did get to a point where all their appointment slots were full, and they were putting kids on a waiting list.
And is it about every five, six years is when it makes its way to this community or? Because it rotates around.
So this is a thing that we do every year.
Okay.
Yep. So this is a local, a local partnership that we have with Kimball and Beecher that we do every year. Yep. Every fall, or not fall, winter, spring time. Yep.
Great.
Thank you.
Great partnership. Thank you.
All right. Any other department heads or elected officials?
Good morning, Board. Sandy Smith. In keeping with the good news, I would like to share that my office rebuttal project should be complete today. This is one of the very first ARPA projects ever approved three years ago, so it's kind of been a long time in the making. The staff is very excited. It looks wonderful. Please stop by and look at it.
That's a pretty quick timeline that you turned that around, so that's great. Yeah.
All right. Any other department heads or elected officials either in the room or on Zoom wish to give an update today? All right. Hearing none, we will move on to the minutes approved from the February 20th and February 22nd, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? All right. The minutes are approved. There will be a hearing coming up, a hearing slash bid opening on the fiscal year 24 pavement markings projects. That will come up a little bit later in the meeting. Next, we will move on to the consent agenda. This will be approved with a, a single resolution unless there's anything you may wish us to, to pull out to discuss.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Jameson.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Next, we'll move on to contracts and agreements. Item A, this is a resolution to authorize Sandy Smith, county recorder, to sign a three-year contract with Fiddler Technologies, Davenport, Iowa, for new land records management system with a one-time installation slash configuration and data conversion cost of $55,000 with an annual cost of $42,773.
So moved.
Seconded.
So moved and seconded. Sandy?
Yes, Board. This is our main recording software system that we use for indexing, retrieving, and e-filing all legal documents in Blackhawk County. We have been with the same vendor for nearly 15 years. Our contract expires in May. In December of 2022, they suffered a major breach that affected hundreds of counties and cities in 21 different states, including Blackhawk County. So at that time, we decided we would look at all options when our contract was up. And so we put out an RFP, and with the assistance of Al and his team, we scored the bids. And I'm happy today to recommend Fiddler Technologies, a Davenport, Iowa-based company.
What's the current, what do we currently pay for that service?
It's almost exactly, the yearly maintenance fee is comparable. The $42,773 is a yearly budgeted item. The one-time fee of $55,000 will be paid entirely out of the records management fund, and they do spread that out over three years for us.
The matrix was great, I thought, the way you kind of, yeah. And you said a team, the team, I don't know how large.
And they have excellent customer service. We completed a site visit in Clinton County. We've called all of their references. I'm very excited. In a couple of months, I'd like them to come in and give you a demo, a very short demo of all the products they can bring to Blackhawk County. They have some really neat, innovative products.
Great.
You mentioned the team members. How many were on the team that?
We had five.
Five? Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Board. Any further discussion or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. All right. Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Jameson.
Little?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. The resolution is approved. Next, we'll move on to item B. This is a resolution, this is the lowest slash only reasonable quote received from Advance Environmental Waterloo, Iowa, for the removal and disposal of asbestos floor tiles and mastic from the basement cafeteria and two conference rooms on the west side near the center of the, of the basement, the treasurer's office, the auditor's office, and the elections office at the Blackhawk County Courthouse with a total bid of $43,445. Be awarded and authorized facilities director to contract, to sign the contract and conditional on the receipt of a certificate of insurance as recommended by Roy Giving, facilities director.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded.
Go ahead. I was going to question you on that only reasonable quote. We must, we don't use that too often.
Yeah.
It's just because it was such a sizable project, it was the only bid that I did receive. One of the requirements from these contractors utilizing the ARPA funds is that they do meet the, or have the unique identification from the sams.gov, and this particular company did have that, so.
Thank you.
And following this project, what, are there still areas with asbestos tiles, like within the, within the courthouse?
There, there are. Like, for an example, this room here, underneath this, we have the, the original floor tiling. If it's not disrupted, it's, it's okay.
Right.
That's the reason why we, we have to focus on these areas because they're the areas that are the areas being remodeled.
Right. Yeah, it's, it's safe until it's either decaying or you gotta remove it.
Exactly. Yep.
All right. All right. Any further discussion or questions, Board? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Jameson.
Trelka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Next, we will move on to other business. This is item A. This is discussion, possible board action on the Cedar Bend Humane Society contract.
Great. Thank you, Board. And I, and this is just really to bring this contract forward. Christie had mentioned that, had we made a decision on it? And I said I hadn't heard back from anybody, but we kind of take a time and review it today just quickly. Some of the things that she talked about, as well as some of the questions even I'd had to clarify a little bit more. And she was going to be here today, and her father ended up having an open heart surgery. So I said if we didn't take action on it, we may be doing it another time, but at least have the discussion so that we could update on it. And the areas that were highlighted, as you recall, and are still highlighted in yellow, were her recommendations. And the Board hadn't stated your opportunity to do to, if the three days worked. She recommended the three-day holding period. It said was willing to leave it at five. I think it was allowing them some discretion, more discretion with what they do with the animals with the three-day because it becomes under their control, so. I don't know if we have any questions on that. I will just put in there that that's still there. Somebody wants to express something later that wants to change on that, but otherwise I thought the three-day worked, and it was her recommendation.
Yeah.
Okay. The next highlighted area was in the event of an animal seizure and being them having to continue to hold the animals. Was it $20 day, $20 per day per animal if ordered to do that? And I think that was mostly if they went into some situations where there was, trying to think of what they do with some of those animals where they've been starved or mistreated and neglected and that type of thing. And when I asked her if there had been, if this has come up in the future and how have we dealt with it? And she really didn't have any numbers of times that it'd come up, was just kind of thinking beforehand. So I asked her if it would be possible that we'd maybe consider this, if she'd bring this to the Board in the situation that it occurred. If something like this comes up, bring it to our attention rather than include it in the contract and not know really. But Board discussion, comments, or whatever, anything on there, I'm happy to pass that on back to her or. She did mention that sometimes there are situations where it could be that animals are removed from the owner, and then the humane society is obligated to hold those until maybe if they release them to, like, go through a court system to be released. And so there could be a fee there. And so that's why I thought we, not knowing what we'd be getting into on that, maybe it'd be better again to come back to the Board with that situation.
Right.
Move on.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think.
I think that's fine.
Okay. I meant, I meant you can get back to me later. I didn't mean to. It's just like, item number five was the free roaming feral cats. That was a new item she was adding to the contract. I know we had a little discussion about that at the previous board meeting. I asked her if she had any idea what the number of cats would be expected for the neutering, if she had. And she said, no, it just depends on what comes in, but they have to deem them healthy before they would actually do the neutering. And there was no cost to the county for that service, so.
I think that's a good addition. Yeah, definitely.
We all felt pretty good about it at the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as they were healthy. Thank you. Item seven, first highlighted was the wildlife. Do they, do we want them to continue to pick up wildlife that are sick, injured, or confined? It seemed to be a good practice, and we'd want to continue, but I don't, that was just my thoughts on it, so. I want you to do that. The other, there was an item that she was also suggesting, and it was a new item, was about the incorporated areas and having animals that are brought in to them that maybe would be from the sheriff's office or someone else and not from owners specifically. And wondered really what they should do about that. I did ask her how many situations there had been of that, and she had no number she could give me. So I asked if they could start maybe keeping track of that and then getting back to us with a number, and then let's discuss maybe that situation again, if that is the case. The dead animal pickup, she had taken out the pickup of deer, and I think that's something that, like I said, was the large because of the size. And so that would be done by, I think it's currently done by others, maybe now anyway. It was just, this was in an old contract. I think just the small animals is what they would continue to do. Owner surrender was another one of those items that she was kind of suggesting that we take a look at if there were pets that were brought to them. And no one had collected a surrender fee or given them a name of an individual to collect from. I asked her again for some numbers and she had none. And I said, you know, this is another tough one to address, putting it in a contract when we didn't have more information about it and how often it happened and that type of thing. So if they start tracking that, and she said they'd be happy to do that, let's see what we're talking about. Then we went on to hours of service. I think none of that probably changed too much. The next item was item nine in the fees. And she was recommending or suggesting, requesting, I guess, a $28,000 for the contract, which is, you can see, was an increase from 27.8, so it wasn't anything sizable for the contract. She was also recommending a five-year contract but was open to whatever we do. And I mentioned to her, I would bring this to the Board. We have done one year. We had, we could possibly do a three or a five. And also the fact that it's only such an insignificant amount that she's increasing for five years. It might be to our benefit to do it for five years and, and to go that route. And then, and there's a 90-day out clause for either party where we did have some issues and need to discuss them too, or something comes up. So five years sounds like maybe a doable or acceptable then with that fee. Okay. Great. Truck fee, I think that, I believe that was an increase from $25 to $50. And that was because they said the gas and the maintenance to cover those kind of costs was kind of unexpected, and they would like to do or clean up with the vehicles after they've had to do some of that as well. And the quarantine was $150 previously, and the county would, she would ask that we'd raise that to 175, which seemed reasonable. I don't think there were many opportunities. There was like four or five times that that happened, so it wasn't like a lot. Collected, she gave, she left this open-ended, which was a dangerous thing to me when she said, collect 25 or 50. So I said, we'll go with the 25. If that's, I mean, she seemed to be okay with that. So it was just like, I'm not changing. It was really just leaving it at that. She said some charge, some charge 25, some 50, so I was kind of thinking we'd stay with that. And then the last part was just the renewal of the contract, and so we've already really kind of discussed that at preference. But if there's anything more you'd like, certainly open to that now or later, or otherwise, just kind of, we don't have to approve it today, but we can make these changes. And then I thought, have Mike review it and put it on a future agenda here, but.
Yeah, no, I, I feel comfortable with, with the changes that have been recommended. You know, especially because the contract sum is not, is hardly changing. Put all the unaltered cats on notice in Blackhawk County. We're coming for your goods.
Yeah, that's for sure. Have your healthies.
Yes, yes.
Have your healthies. Any questions or comments or things to look into further or ask, Dan? Tom, how about you? I know you've had questions regarding the contract in previous years.
Yeah, I, I monitor this monthly bills over the years. I don't, what's it broken down to a month? What do we pay per month?
About 27.19, I think. 2,719 approximately today.
And if you look at the majority of the bills, you got four animals on there. So do the math on what you're paying a month for each animal.
I think the calls, she started giving us a separate sheet, and I don't have those statistics compiled, but I would guess it's maybe between 10 and 20 a month, actually. They don't all result in a pickup that we're charged for. There can be other things, so that, that's why it's a little bit tricky to follow sometimes.
And we were repeatedly charged for Alcor and Raymond due to the fact that the sheriff does the policing up there, which has nothing to do with the contract. So the bills over the years, like I said, were monitored to make sure we weren't being charged for in other cities and also questioning the feral cat situation, where a gentleman brings in 13, 14 at a time.
Well, I think, yeah, monitoring, that's kind of probably what we'd like to do and like her to do for us, too, providing those numbers. And I said, and updates throughout the year. They are really the only service in town or in this area that's been doing, providing the service. And from that standpoint, that there's a lot they do, so.
I served on the Board with Waterloo and Cedar Falls. Both of them backed out of their contracts at that time because they couldn't afford them or didn't want to pay that much. Eventually Waterloo settled with them on a lower contract. And I'm not sure what Cedar Falls did. They probably did the same. They probably did the same thing. The county, they didn't do anything. That was probably about seven, eight years ago.
Well, and I know we looked at other services or others wanting to do it at one point in time a few years ago too, and there wasn't anyone that would do it, so.
Well, I'm an animal lover. I think it's humane to have somebody like that do that. I just think that we're being overcharged. And again, it was brought to my attention by the sheriff's office on that, the work they had to do picking it up, taking it out there, putting it away, locking it up and leaving. And we were being charged from the Humane Society. So those are just things that happened over the years, just reporting them.
Yeah. Well, and we, the sheriff has said before too, they, their response is to get rid of those animals or get them to into the care of someone as fast as they can and get back out and do their jobs. So, yeah, there are situations that are not the norm always. Okay, well, if there aren't any, I was going to say, if there are, please email me or let me know or something too. In the meantime, then I'll get it to Mike.
Sounds good.
Have his review too.
Thank you. Thank you for following up on this.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item B. This is discussion, possible board action, approval of future Blackhawk County logo for public release at a later date. Come on.
Do you have to move and second and all that?
Not for you to get up to the podium.
Still getting the hang of it. Um, yeah, so we've been working, well, you all started the logo process actually before I came on board. Gabby DeWitt, marketing coordinator. You all started the market, logo process before I came on board and it included a marketing committee that has department representatives and included a survey of the community as well as staff to kind of influence the direction that the logo went. We're now at a point that we've kind of finalized the logo that the committee likes and wants to move forward with, but we need to get your approval to kind of keep going. And with this approval, then we'll go ahead. Corkery and Corkery is online, but he can't, he's listening only. He can't chime in, but we're now in the process of putting together a brand guide, maybe some, or yes, some variations of the logo for social media, like I sent all of you. We have eleven Facebook accounts. Some of them will want to have their own profile picture, but we don't want them all to be the same logo. So some variations on the logo, so. But we just need to move forward so that we can continue doing this. Any questions?
You've got the banner, tablecloth and backdrop and types of things. So some of the events you're thinking of utilizing that for were.
Right now, we're just approving the logo, right? And then the next one is the, yeah, because, yeah, so yes, I, I kind of have some things in mind that I would like to get. And that was kind of the next item, the budget is so that we can, and not even necessarily events, but we have staff that attend, you know, hiring fairs, things where we're trying to get excitement in working in the county. And so just having some items that identify us as being part of the county, the backdrop, you know, if we're doing photos of staff, if we're doing videos that we maybe don't necessarily, although now we're remodeling all of our office areas, it'd be really great to have video back there. But there might not be areas where we want to do videos. So having a backdrop, we have one at Public Health that we can film our staff behind or in front of.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. This is approval of future Blackhawk County logo for public release at a later date. Any further questions or discussion, board? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Jameson.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Droka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Next, this is item C, discussion, possible board action, motion to approve proposed budget for implementing the launch of the new Blackhawk County logo slash brand for a total amount of nine thousand dollars.
Right. So when I originally had proposed my fiscal year twenty four, twenty five budget, we kind of had some of these funds in both places. And then when we sat down and thought about it and the fact that we really want to get excitement about the logo, we really want to kind of hit the ground running, we realized we probably need to separate that out. And so like I've told you, I shaved some part off of our fiscal year twenty four budget, took some out of fiscal year twenty five. And these are the items that I think would really kind of help us launch that logo and garner some excitement about this new look. And we're looking at the end of March, beginning of April for that.
All right.
I make the motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion, board? Hearing done. Roll call, please, Mr. Jameson.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Droka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it is now nine thirty-five and this is a hearing slash bid opening on the fiscal year twenty four pavement markings project. First is a motion received and placed on file, proof of publication of notice of public hearing.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, the motion carries. Next is a motion to close the, the hearing after oral and written comments are received.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any written comments, Mr. Jameson?
There's no written comments.
All right. All those in favor of closing the hearing, say aye.
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 All who opposed, the motion is carried. Uh, next is bids to be received, open and read. Uh, the bid deadline was three P M. Friday, February twenty third, twenty twenty four.
Yep. We received four bids. The first bid is from Iowa Plains Signing, Slater, Iowa. They have submitted their bid bond. The total bid is two hundred thirty-six thousand, four hundred forty dollars, eighty-six cents, two three six, comma, four four zero point eight six.
I assume they had a bond.
Pardon me?
I assume they had the bond.
Yes. Iowa Plains did submit the bid bond. The second bid comes from Wykurt Contracting Incorporated, Cedar Falls, Iowa. They have also included their bid bond. That bid is one hundred eighty thousand, two hundred four dollars, sixty-six cents, Vogel Traffic Services, Orange City, Iowa, is our third bidder. They have also submitted their bid bond. The bid is one hundred seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred seventy-four dollars, thirty-four cents, one seven nine, comma, seven seven four point three four. And then this is the last bid from Farner Asphalt Sealers. That bid is one hundred eighty thousand, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents, one eight zero, comma, nine eight seven point eight five.
All right, thank you. All right, next is a motion that the board supervisors review and place on file the bids to allow time to review said bids as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. All right, next we'll move on to discussion, possible board action, consideration, all aspects of the fiscal year twenty five Blackhawk County budget.
All right. And where would, do you want to start with the position requests? What would you like to do?
Mm-hmm. That, that sounds good to me.
I don't know where you want to start with that.
At a doctor's appointment.
All right. Al, are you on? Would you like to discuss yours? I know Al's remote today.
He said he really wasn't feeling well, so I wondered if, yeah, he will be able to. Otherwise, we said we could probably wait to do that on Thursday, but.
Boring board. I'm online.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a little under the weather today, but didn't want to miss the board meeting.
Yeah, I think he was, yeah, probably. Would it work for you best to wait until Thursday, you think? How are you feeling and?
Uh, not too bad at the moment. I mean, I guess if you guys had any questions or, I'm sorry, Michelle, I didn't know if you wanted to like post the, I didn't know if you were showing, sharing the data sheets.
What sheet was that? To share which sheet, Al? I'm sorry.
Oh, I didn't know if you were like going over all requests for each department, per by department.
We, we are, Al, and I, I do have a sheet up for the changes in staffing and your two requests are on there to add one systems administrator, which is basically a position transfer from the sheriff's office. The twist, I guess I'll say with that is it was previously funded from the sixty percent of the courthouse security fund, which is not able to sustain that expense. So I unfortunately am having to approve adding it to the general tax levy. Then he else, and he also has a promotion for another employee on here to, to, and I don't know that this is a final title. This is one that was being tossed around early on, information technology manager. And there's a cost related to that too. So Al, is there anything you would like to add?
Um, yeah, thanks for covering that, Michelle. Uh, yes, that, that, that second position, that's a restructuring. So we're eliminating one of the positions and restructuring it to a IT manager position sensitive title. And I think Amanda spoke to that a little bit before, that will have, that will move up on the, on the scale a little bit. Any questions regarding that?
No, I, I support the, the change in promotion from one position and, which with the other position, you know, it's, we don't have the option of funding it for sixty forty anymore. So I guess I, I support IT's request here.
Yeah, I'm supportive of the requests, both of those requests as well. Um, you know, really represents the forward thinking succession planning that I think we hope that all departments get into practice of. So, um, you know, moving that employee over to the information's tech manager makes a lot of sense to me. And yeah, it doesn't sound like we've got a, the transfer over is almost a requirement for us, right?
Is the funding available in any other source that we considered as far as where we could? I, I know the sheriff's got some vacancies in, in his, and this is just a question, not going for deputies' positions, but I was going to say if we've had some vacancies in there, is there any way we could utilize that funding? And since this is going to be, I assume, almost a full-time person assigned, even though it's a team effort, I don't know. That's just a question. Maybe that's a question for you, Al. Not budget wise, that's the sheriff's budget, but I just meant if we were to look at some configuration or could utilize funding from a different position for this, because it wouldn't be, I'm just looking at it not requiring our, the team effort I know we'll be utilizing, but being at least like a full-time person that's needed there. Al? I mean, the.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No. So the sheriff's office is also funded out of the general levy. So it doesn't really matter. Terms of the bottom line, it makes no difference whether you choose to reduce funding or change something, that's certainly the board's prerogative. The only other, uh, really other funding stream would be secondary roads. Otherwise, everything is all on our regular property taxes. No, not looking for something.
There's not maybe still just a portion of the sixty forty that could fund part of it, or it's just not, not going to be sustainable if we do that at all.
Well, let's just jump over there and see. So I, I did a little three-year summary. And so for June, the fiscal year June of twenty five, I've gone through and fed in the new security contract with Permar. You remember that was redone last summer. So the projected cost from that per the maintenance department is probably a hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. And that was a pretty substantial increase from what we were paying before. Then, as you know, we've been charging the cost of one deputy for courthouse security. So that cost is estimated at approximately a hundred and thirteen thousand for fiscal twenty five. On the revenue side of things, I am using three, estimating room and board at three hundred thousand, and I'm estimating the fine revenue at forty-eight thousand, which is approximately where we've been the last couple of years. But when I do that and we allocate sixty percent to this, that revenue is only two twenty-eight. So even with completely eliminating that IT position, the costs that are remaining are more than the projected revenue. We do have some balance in that account, if you will, that, but we'll, we'll have to be using it to finish this unless we would change something about either the courthouse security or how we handle the deputy in the courthouse. Right now, there are two, half is funded from the attorney's fine collection and one is funded from here.
So this is pretty much the only real option.
Yeah.
Okay.
One to be answered, yeah.
Do we want to move on to maintenance?
Sure. Rory?
Good morning again, Rory Giving, facilities director.
Morning.
Morning. I don't know, Michelle, if you wanted to touch on this before I go or?
No, I have stuff up there, but I must not click share screen, huh? Apologize for that. Wonder Al was asking if I was sharing. Does that help?
Yeah.
There we go.
All right. As you know, our maintenance department, we have formally asked for a, a new position. This would be a, more of a administrative one, is the technical title, but more of a office specialist type position for our department. Over the years, uh, you know, we, we do take a great amount of pride in all the accomplishments that our, our department does make with regards to keeping our facilities up and running and the many, many projects that we're involved with, really focusing on energy efficiencies, you know, all of those types of things. The committees that we're involved in, whether it's security, emergency. The committees that we're involved in, whether it's security, uh, emergency, uh, preparedness, ADA, all of those things, our department, uh, has a, a great deal of involvement with. So over the years, this has been a position that I've often, uh, looked at, and, uh, this year particularly, um, uh, and I don't want to just focus on the fact that we have all of these ARPA projects, uh, coming up, because I know that question has been asked at me, but, yeah, our, our load is pretty heavy right now, but even looking back at what our department has accomplished, um, we can definitely get focused on, on certain projects, and I think other departments will, will, uh, come to this defense as well, but, uh, um, other things do go lacking. Um, and that's what we're trying to approve, improve with this position. We're trying to, uh, allow somebody to just focus on, uh, work orders, taking that customer phone call or client or however, code enforcement, um, really spending a great deal of time that now currently the administrative aid three, uh, position does. And then, uh, that would allow that administrative aid three position, uh, to move on to more of a project-type management role, uh, to, to really help streamline, uh, the many projects that we are involved with, um, looking at efficiencies, helping that bucket from overflowing that Michelle had mentioned last week. Just committees and, and really staying on top of all those things that make us, uh, efficient as a county, I truly do believe that this position, uh, would fulfill that need from our department's standpoint. Any questions?
I wonder, uh, for this position and the county auditor position, just to transition into it, if we could try a less than full-time person or hold off until January first. I mean, the chickens are going to come home to roost eventually, but, well, I don't know what the, uh, employee pool is like for part-time people is my concern.
Yeah, I, I think that will be challenged.
Yeah.
I was even considering something a little bit different than that when you're mentioning it, though. I, I'm assuming you have money in your budget for this year, maybe for some positions that haven't been filled, to, if we were to fund this early, is what I was wondering, because it would certainly help speed up the process of getting some of these things in place and done, so, not to counter your thoughts on it, but it was just one of the things that I thought if you had funding in your budget, even that if we'd look at this before July one, would be beneficial to the county.
Um...
Have you looked at your budget, or do you know, or has Michelle?
I guess as far as positions go, um, if you're asking, um, where our budget sits with regards to, uh, positions, uh, we do have, we do know that, uh, we have a retirement coming up, um, but, you know, I'm going to be in hopes of, of backfilling that more than likely. So I think, uh, as far as our budget goes, um, if, if this, if I'm understanding you correctly, it's, it's pretty much, it, it has all of this information within our budget currently right now. Is that what you're asking?
No. If you were allowed to and had the funding for it in your budget currently to start this position immediately, rather than July one, do you have that in your budget? I, I don't think they have had any vacancies, so I don't believe there's any personnel...
Okay, well, that answers that.
No, we would have to pull from something else to cover that.
That's all right. Ideally, I know that would probably assist. I know how many interruptions there are downstairs, whether it's with bathroom issues or, you know, all the things going on, and I know that constantly interrupts Carol from doing some other project management she's been doing, but...
Yeah. The volume of, of customer interaction, clients, what have you, uh, it is, it can be, uh, it can be really trying at times, and, uh, to the point where we've actually had to shut our door just because we do have a task that is, uh, with a due date coming up, and, uh, just to be able to focus. And so, uh, this, uh, this position would, would allow us to have somebody there just to really focus on our work order system that we have, uh, you know, build off of that system, increase efficiencies, uh, and really focus on, uh, client, customer relations as people call in.
I, I, I mean, I definitely see the need for the...
You know, I, I think there might be funding available from other departments, I would say.
I'm willing to take funding from other...
Yeah.
No fool, yeah, who's first in line, huh? From their overage, maybe, at the time, yeah, not, not to take funding, yeah.
I think...
Well, that's a place we could look, so we're going to see.
Yeah, assuming that we do go forward with this position, which I am supportive of, um, I think it sounds like someone would want to take a look at whether there's a way to, you know, expedite this, just because of the, the number of projects going on right now.
Yeah. Yeah, I honestly, I, I, I kind of consider myself somewhat conservative when it comes to, you know, expenses and frugal, and I think over the years, I think, you know, that shows, and that's been a, uh, pretty evident. I wouldn't put this on here if I didn't truly feel like, uh, there was a definite need for it.
Believe me with your recommendations on potential reductions, just to try to shake the frost off the tree, I'm impressed. I mean, it's sincere.
Yep. Thank you.
Yeah. I'd be supportive of that as well, so. And sooner the better if we have money in, in any kind of funding that we could look at, so.
All right, word. All right, moving on, um, to the, the county auditor's office.
They let him out of jury duty just for this.
Hey!
You all look different from here.
Yeah. Not better, not worse.
All right, so to review, uh, we had the payroll accounting manager position go vacant last year, and that was filled by our accountant, Jen Todd, and at that time, it was, um, brought to us as a suggestion by Michelle and by, uh, Amanda Fesenmeyer from HR, that we look at the possibility of having, um, some duties, uh, moved from our office to the board office under Michelle, and there are, you know, various ways of looking at that, um, but there, there was a discussion of sharing a position, but what we ultimately decided was to move the position in total down to the board office. But in the meantime, that has not been filled, and in our office, with that vacancy and with Jen learning a new job and still trying to continue the duties of her old job, it's put quite a bit of stress on our department. And, um, we would like to see that position restored in a slightly different fashion, and we've discussed that some with, with the board, uh, already, but, um, some of the specific duties that we would be talking about would be, uh, keeping fixed assets and controlled assets current, and, um, providing backup for payroll and accounts payable, receivable divisions, which easily become short-staffed because of the smallest of those divisions and the amount of leave time that's accrued and, uh, that people need to take. Uh, there have been special circumstances for different people in those divisions in different times, and, and you, you can just expect, um, those sorts of situations to arise where we need backup. This department, when I came here, I realize it's a long time ago, but we had twenty-two people in, in this department, and I think we've done a good job over the years of, um, you know, things change, duties move around, um, improvements occur in technology and so forth, and, uh, we've, whenever the, the board has asked us to help economize, we've done our best, and, and we've pitched in and helped out, but we're at a point now where, uh, staff is, um, pretty much down to bare bones, and it's, um, it can cause, uh, a lot of stress when you're, when you're, uh, really tight-staffed. So, um, we'll just throw that out for openers and see what you...
So this, maybe a question for Michelle then, or, so the, the, the board of supervisors line that, that's at ninety-four-nine, are, is this ultimately the same position that we're just trying to figure out where it's going, or?
Probably. Um, I had, the budgets were done at different times, and so the health insurance and the pay might be slightly different between the two.
Sure. Okay. But that...
Or it could be two positions.
Because they're both being, yeah, because they're both being added to this, to this tally, so then...
Well, they, but they're not, because I've subtracted as a transfer, because that, that is what we had decided to do. We did interview some candidates last fall. We didn't have a chance at that time to redo the job description, and after interviewing some, the entire panel, which Jen Todd was a part of, agreed that we, we hadn't probably found the, the ideal candidate, and so I have redone that job description, and the, the point of, I mean, there's, there's several points, I don't know if you want to talk about that now, or if I should wait a minute, but...
I'm trying to figure out, right, because if we're, if we're saying this position would be added...
Right.
To backfill a position that's going to be hired at some point, or however this works out, in the supervisor's office, that, to me, feels like it is, it's, it's... It sounds like it's adding a new role.
One. It is adding, they are requesting to add one, they're, so when we, I originally, when this came up, asked if we could split that position, and the auditor's office did not feel that that was an ideal situation. But, you know, I've, I've been here now through a, a full year, we've been through a budget, I've been through an audit, and so some concerns I have, I, I do think you need a succession plan for the finance director office, particularly when I came in, the administrative aide left shortly after that. It's, you're pretty much on an island of your own to figure out a lot of really important things, right? So the finance director's role is to pull everything together, both for the budget and the audits, almost more critical with the audit. So it, it would be helpful for that finance director position to have a good understanding of how things work, and the way you get that probably is to have a more active role with the accounting or the bookkeeping, that, the bill-paying that goes on, um, from the auditor's office. And that also helps provide really important background for the budget. That, that's how you know what people are paying for out of certain accounts, is you just get familiar with that, right? So it, I think it would be very helpful for the long-term health of the county to have that. I happen to have used our particular financial software before, so that was a little bit easier transition for me than it might be for some others. I had not had exposure to the business analytics, and certainly not the way that we keep our books, so there's still a lot of things to learn, and, um, I just think it would be really helpful to have some of that spread between the two offices. We need, and the finance director really gets to, has to pull everything together, so being involved with reviewing some of those things where the detail work is done in the auditor's office, I think would be very helpful to both, both areas. I think having, I hope would be, we'd get someone with at least an accounting degree that could help with those things. But the intent of that position, I always thought, was, it's got to be some kind of shared, I hate to say shared governance, but kind of, um, there, you know, I don't know that we want to split an employee and say, oh, your office is here two days a week and they're two days a week, but, um, I, I think we, we need to find a way to make that work.
The shared, share of a position.
Michelle, I got a question. Would it make sense to move the finance director over to the auditor's office?
I really, I've thought about that a lot. I, I don't think so. I think that the auditor's office focus has a lot of things under it, particularly things like elections, that's not really an accounting function. Then you have the real estate, which, again, not necessarily directly accounting function, there's certainly numbers involved. So I do think it, it serves the county better, that the finances are separate. I, I think the auditors, you know, as you look through the code, that position was created to pay the bills, process the payroll, but it, that was long ago before accounting became as complicated really as it is today. I mean, some of the subjects that didn't even exist twenty-five years ago that we have to do today, if you look at the audit, there's, there's actually two sets of financial statements in the audit now. One is allegedly to emulate private finance, so we're now tracking our debt in financial statements, we didn't use to do that. We're tracking our fixed assets in financial statements, we didn't really use to do that. We are tracking pension liabilities, didn't use to do that. Now we have to track leases and software. There's, there's just a lot of complex things that, you know, the people in the white ivory towers keep adding that I, I think would benefit us to, to have that expertise and be in a separate, um, area to do that.
Well, the reason why I ask, when I first got elected, the finance director didn't exist, and it wasn't in, it was all the budget and everything was handled in the auditors. Uh, the current majority of the board at that time decided they wanted to be in control, and they hired a finance director, so that's when it was actually created. Uh, up till that point, the auditor's office did the budget with the board on every budget season. Over the years, I know the board has had some talk about moving the finance director back, which it wasn't called the finance director, to the auditor's office, uh, seeing as if that's where all, majority of the work is done. So I was just wondering if it made more sense, the reason I ask the question, is it was created really out of politics, and if it should go back to where it started from for the last forty years prior to that, or fifty years.
That's certainly up to the board. I think it can function very well the way it is, and I know Amanda and I have explored how some of the other larger counties are doing it, and they seem to be, I'm feeling, they're creating separate finance departments and using them that way, and Amanda maybe can speak to that more.
So an option, though, is still, and not that you can't, but I was going to say anytime, but, um, is sharing the position not something that seems to work?
I think it could if it were filled.
If it were, kind of, if, I mean, I know there probably needs to be more discussion and talk.
We won't know till we try it.
We haven't tried, because we haven't filled it, and I, I need to address Tom, when he said all the work's done in the auditor's office, I, I beg to differ. I've been, I feel like I've been putting in a lot of time since I started here, doing a lot of work.
Yeah, no, I was just, I was just basing off the way it was done before.
Yeah, I mean, in a certain way.
And how, and how the finance director was actually came about in Blackhawk County, and Grant knows, too. It was basically politics. It created that position because they wanted the boardroom to have the control over the finances. That's the reason why that position was created. So, you know, I understand it's changed over the years, the functions in the auditor's office and so forth, but I'm just saying, that's where it was when I first got elected, and there was a reason why the position in the boardroom was created.
Yeah.
If we, if we do maintain this, or just need to try to do this as a shared position, are we, are we budgeting enough to get somebody with, with an auditing, with an accounting degree?
I hope so. I don't, I don't know. But I think it's, I think that has to be a, a requirement.
I mean, I do think that for the, for the purposes of the, the staffing budget side, I'm comfortable to fund it the higher dollar amount, and whichever office that ultimately is out of, we can have that, we can make that, I know we've got some sort of hard deadlines coming up with the budget, and so I don't want to get too far in the weeds of should it be under this department or that department? I think there's, there's time to do that, but if we were to, to say, we're going to fund at the ninety-seven, three nineteen...
Well, I would still, um, like to put one last pitch in for having positions in both offices. I can see where it's possible that a split position might work, uh, time will tell, but we, we have a... tell, but we, we have a succession situation in our own office, we were very fortunate that we had Jen Todd there when, when Billy went down to the Treasurer's Office, if we hadn't had her, we'd, we'd be, you know, in a worse position than we are now, so I, I do think that there's, and I would ask if, if Amanda has any comments on this, I think there's justification for having full-time positions in both offices, and Amanda, if you wanted to discuss.
So, again, you know, we brought this up to Grant, I've been, this has been on my radar with regards to having a, a finance professional, financial professional under the Finance Director, obviously, we've gone through, you know, a few Finance Directors, and so just to kind of reframe that, that, you know, kind of waited for an opportunity where a position was open, to even explore this idea of possibly some of this work being a little bit more fluid, and Grant and I have talked a lot about how over the years, over his career, he's seen a wide range of experience and skills across all of his staff, where that accounting expertise is pretty fluid, but I think for our future, it's important, you know, certainly to have that succession plan, you know, in, in both those areas. One alternative, I think, to, I talked about last board, meaning that when we have vacancies, sometimes we just automatically backfill it as, you know, quickly as we can, and I encourage departments to just pause a little bit, and, you know, think about, has the job and has the department changed? You know, I've talked about, and maybe this could be something, if it is, ends up being just one position is supported, I still think we'd want to look at enriching some jobs in the auditor's office possibly, and evaluating some of that in order to have some kind of succession plan still, I guess if that makes sense, I did that in HR, for example, I was able to kind of maximize the utility of the employees there, by realigning them to a senior generalist and an HR generalist, there may be that possibility, and I just, you know, if we do have to go down to one, if two can't be supported, I want that to be explored as well, but.
So Grant, you're saying, you, you see this as a critical position for your succession planning within your office?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you, what are your thoughts on the restructuring concept that Amanda mentions, kind of looking at your department and seeing if there is an opportunity to?
We can look at that.
Do that restructure and change some of those?
I think there's possibilities there, but, you know, like I say, the smaller the staff gets, the less flexibility you have.
And what, what's the size of the, your?
Well, we have, well, I'll have to break it down by division, we have two people in payroll, we have two people in accounts payable and receivable, three people in elections, including the elections manager, two people in the plat room, and then two other supervisory staff, Jen and Tim.
All right, so about half the size of what the office was probably at its highest.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, with that, I guess, I support trying to find a way for both these positions.
Any other questions for me?
Any other questions, Board? All right, thank you, Grant.
Thank you.
Really stressful being up here.
Yes, yes.
Good, yeah.
All right, do you, want to move on and discuss health, or?
Sure.
Okay.
Morning, Board.
Morning.
Good morning. So our position request that's included and is reflected here is increasing a part-time temporary employee to a full-time temporary employee, and the rationale for this request is linked to our disease surveillance activities, as I have shared numerous times, we're seeing increases in our, in particular with our tuberculosis program, this community health worker works pretty much exclusively with our TB program, to kind of address the non-medical needs of our TB clients and contacts, the, you can see here that the cost of increasing that from a point seven to a one point oh is, is that twenty-four thousand four hundred and fifty-three, a, a little bit of kind of the justification of, of why I originally asked to increase this to a full-time is because this was a new position last year that I asked for in the FY twenty-four budget, at the time of the FY twenty-four budget, we had doubled our annual TB caseload from the, you know, I think it was an eight-year average, as of right now, we've tripled our annual caseload, so we had thirteen active TB cases in, in twenty-twenty-three, when I was here a year ago, we were sitting around eight, I think eight or nine is where we were at, and our public health nurses, our team of public health nurses, they, their primary job is to do the medical case management for those TB cases, so that the community health worker is assisting with the non-medical case management stuff, so coordination of care for shelter, food, utilities, transportation, language assistance in some cases, employment, all the things that kind of factor into them being able to recover and move on and get us off our, you know, get off of our caseload, because our goal is to get them as healthy as soon as possible, and so really, that's what that community health worker is assisting with, I think I've mentioned previously that we're seeing pretty complex cases with a lot of needs, and so that's really what this temporary community health worker is assisting with.
Sounds like without, without further assistance here, we're gonna be putting further stress on our, our medical staff, too, as, as the cases take longer, and.
Right, right, you know, I think in public health, for a very long time, actually as long as I've worked in public health, there's been a do more with less mentality, and I cannot figure out how to do more with less with our, with our nurses, they are, they are actually beyond capacity for their workload, and so I'm looking for a way that doesn't require hiring another nurse, because we, obviously, we're trying that, and it's not very successful, because of just where the nursing market is, to be able to take as much as we can off their plate that doesn't need to be performed by a nurse.
Well, I'm, I'm supportive of this, this change.
And is that there is a person in this position now, we'd just be?
There is, yep.
Okay, I was gonna say.
Yep, we do have someone that was hired back in August, she's been in this role since then, and has done, has been very successful in ability to kind of work with the, our clients and contacts to those clients, to kind of mitigate further needs, I guess I, I should say, and, and kind of be that care coordination piece to connect them to resources and things like that.
Great, I just knew there were some vacancies and thought this might be one that was difficult.
That's not one of them.
That's not one.
No.
Thank you.
All right, Board, any other questions? Caitlin, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll move on to engineering.
Good morning, Board, Kathy Nicholas, engineer.
Good morning.
The last gas tax was passed in about twenty-sixteen, since that time, and as you know, everyone knows, costs have gone up, asphalt continues to be more expensive, we are able to pave less asphalt every year, I've told you it is important that we keep up with the number of miles we are resurfacing every year, but nevertheless, our budget can't sustain that, and therefore, we just have a little bit less work to do, we are, have become very efficient with our super-powered CAD computers, our staff is very seasoned, we're getting more seasoned, we are becoming more efficient in the engineer's office at what we do, and we are able to afford less contract work every, as the years go by, so we, in addition to that, hiring civil engineering technology technicians is becoming difficult, our pay in the public sector just can't keep up with the private sector, it seems, so we are being challenged to find those individuals, we looked last year after a vacancy with one of our technicians, and we've, after looking for many months, we just decided that probably our best option right now is to stick with a summer employee, and just get by with one less civil engineering technician for the foreseeable future, that could change, for example, if there is another gas tax that would be passed at some point, or a new influx in funding, but at this point, we feel we're in a good place with the technicians that we have. Meanwhile, at our shop, we've, we have noticed a need to become more efficient, technology is changing, our current setup is that our maintenance superintendent oversees the, the Longfellow shop, the three mechanics in our parts, an inventory person, as well as our facilities director, those four people, he has gone much of the day, much of the, the time, out and about checking on the activities of our other twenty-eight employees, keeping them busy, and just due to technology, work orders, fleet management, there is a lot of new technology that we would like to get out at Longfellow, we are budgeting for some of that in the, the future, this fiscal year yet, we feel that we really need someone with mechanic's skills, but yet has had some supervisory experience, we would really like to take advantage of being able to hire a shop foreman for the Longfellow facility, most counties have a shop foreman, somebody who oversees the day-to-day operations of their shop, the Longfellow shop, we just feel like we could be more efficient, be there when some decisions need to be made, such as outsourcing of work, what parts to be, to be ordering, all those types of things that a shop has to contend with, on a daily basis, we would just really like to focus our efforts on a shop foreman, this, for the foreseeable future out there, so that's why we're asking to swap one position for the other, with a little bit of an increase in, in funding needed for a manager position.
That sounds like you've done much what Amanda's talked about, though, too, to look at your operations and see sometimes where the need is for restructuring, or when you're able to meet some of these needs.
Yes, we've done that, over the last fifteen years, we've definitely been able to do that, as, as we've become more efficient in the office, we've swapped a surveyor for a GIS technician, and then when we had an administrative aide retire a few years ago, that's when we went to the, our roadside manager, with a little bit of help with conservation, picking up part of our GIS technician, so we, we've been able to, you know, become more efficient and look at our priorities and our needs for the future, and how can that, how can we change our workforce to help us get to those goals.
The engineering tech aide position, that's not currently filled?
Right, we, due to a retirement, excuse me, due to a, a death last year, in an individual who went out to the secondary roads department, we were down two technicians, we did, we were able to backfill one of those positions, but it took us a long time, a lot of months to look for one, and we were just not successful, so therefore, we just decided to look at what our needs were, and what we can realistically backfill.
All right, well, I'm, I'm supportive of this change, I think you've.
That's a non-tax.
Kathy, does your, does your salaries come out of tax dollars, or is that road use money?
Our salaries come out of the road use tax fund.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Board.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we want, Michelle, do you want us to take like official action on positions today, or?
I kind of think we might want to wait.
Okay.
Review some other things, maybe by Thursday, we should do that. So I, I also provided again the copy of the fund balance spend-down plan, and as your Finance Director, I'm going to continue to say, don't think we want to use fund balance to support salaries and operating, and the, the reason for that is, all of those that you fund using fund balance this year, you're gonna have to fund next year, plus next year's increases, so that, that becomes, it will drain it, and then I don't know what you'll do, right, that those decisions will just become more and more difficult, so I have to provide a fund down spend plan that is careful, allows us to handle unexpected things, and it, it does, I mean, nobody's more disappointed than me this year to realize what, what was happening with our three-fifty cap, but, yeah, I had hoped to be able to fund all our cap at a lot of fund balance, which you can do, yet, but should you do that, as option one shows on here, your, your fund balance will be getting down to, and I, I chose the forty-five percent level, because I would like to be able to see you have some fund balance that's available to do what I call immediate opportunities, and the one that really comes to my mind is the ability to purchase the Raymount building, you know, we didn't have to say, oh, gosh, we have to bond money, or we have to do this or do that to get that, we actually had a good savings account and could use it to take advantage of that opportunity, so I would, it's important to me to see you maintain that, in the event that other things like that come up, so this first option, I've, I've tried to say, okay, let's just do everything that people requested for capital out of fund balance, if you do that, you know, by year twenty-seven, we're down to that limit, and we, at that point, barring something that I don't foresee today, you know, huge increases in property value, some new revenue stream, something, we won't, and another, a change in the law that would allow us to borrow for things like vehicles and equipment, by twenty-twenty-seven, then you, you, I don't know what our departments would do to replace needed vehicles and equipment, because the current state code does not allow us to use bonding for equipment, that somehow was eliminated when they raised the caps, so they, they give and they take away all at the same time, so I then put together option two, which allows you to spend down the fund balance for the, the equipment and the vehicles, if you will, so the things that don't qualify for bonding would still have to come out of fund balance, but that gets us to at least twenty-thirty, before we have more serious considerations, but we would have to bond then for the types of things that are eligible for bonding, and I, I don't believe on this version that I included the, the building, yeah, it doesn't include the engineering building, but that, those were the plans that I was thinking about, so I, I have done some work to kind of estimate, okay, what, what if we did, under option two, we start bonding for bond-eligible projects, because then we, we're going to have to raise our taxes to do that, right? We do have some small amount of debt service now, it's gonna be, if we don't borrow anymore, that should be paid off in twenty-twenty-seven, the county-funded, property tax-funded portion, so if we did start this, your taxes would go up eleven cents, and this is on the yellow line there, in twenty-twenty-six, they're gonna go up another fourteen cents, almost fifteen cents in twenty-twenty-seven, up to thirty cents in twenty-twenty-eight, and up another thirty-four point seven, so actually, by year twenty-nine, we're gonna add thirty-four point seven cents to the levy we have today, so it's a, you are increasing probably at a relatively gradual rate, I didn't attempt to say, because I, I know the next question is, well, what percentage is out of their taxes, it depends, it depends on what we do for our other taxes, so I did not try to calculate that on here, I also did an exhibit where if we did choose to bond ten million dollars for a building, starting in twenty-twenty-seven, you'd, you'd be issuing the bonds in twenty-six, starting to repay them in twenty-seven, and you can see then by fiscal twenty-nine, that levy rate is, we're gonna add fifty cents to the levy rate to do that, and I would just was, didn't know for sure what, where, what the intent is for the building, so that's why I'm showing you the two different options, so you can. you the two different options. So you can look at those, decide what you want to do.
Well, I'm supportive of going the route of bonding for what we can bond for, what's eligible. That also has the added benefit of allowing us, we tap into at least some of that TIF revenue. I know that affects everybody, all the, right? But we, we do tap into some of that, that the counties and the school districts don't get currently. And so...
And so the option of that really is the benefit of not using our fund reserves as, to the level, to a larger level and being able to do that. There is a cost for doing it, and a limited amount, it sounds like, of actual equipment or projects or things that we can bond for. Have you calculated that number and what that means to us as far as, of the things that we are, look, taking, removing from our, like, would be fund reserves?
Yes, that's what option one is on that sheet. Yep. I, I reviewed our, the five-year CIPs that people turned in, I reviewed with the bonding attorney to determine what's eligible and what isn't. And that, that's how I split those up.
Michelle, what, what is the interest rate right now for bonding?
It's, they're telling me it's running, and so our, our normal CIP, I stuck with a very short-term, five-year repayment. And so four and, four and three quarters to 5% is where that's running right now. And I think, yeah. So the 12-year issue, I put in a longer-term issue for a building just because it, it will last longer and it's a more expensive proposition. So that rate, they're projecting currently at 4.61%. So rates are substantially higher than they were. I'm optimistic they, I think they're going to come down some more. I can't tell you of when or how much, but I would anticipate them continuing to decline a little bit.
Well, we did get sort of used to really low, historically low interest rates, but that number doesn't sound horribly off from 2018, 20, I mean, sort of in line with where 2018, 2019 was before the...
Yeah, just depends, I think, on credits. I sold some for a percent before, before everything happened. But yeah, I don't, you're right. I don't, we're not, I don't anticipate. Actually, I hope we do not go down to 1% again. I think that's probably not a good thing. But I just, I do think it might fall somewhat.
Michelle, I got one more question on the engineer then. If you were to bond for a building for the engineer, would, that would be paid with road use monies, wouldn't it, rather than tax dollars?
It doesn't have to be. I did reach out to, about that, and the building can be done with taxes. I, I believe that, and, and I did put a full $10 million in here. I believe that the engineer had suggested they would possibly fund $1 million in each of two years. And I don't remember which years in this picture, but they were, I think, hoping to preserve the rest of their budget for operations and equipment and things.
How long of a bond were you looking at? How many years?
On the building? I, I have projections for several options. I'm, the one I'm showing here is the 12-year, a 12-year issue. So still a relatively short repayment. I do have information on, I, I had them run it for 10, 12, 15, and I think they might have even done a 20-year. I think 12 is a good compromise, maybe.
Do you know, our current bonds right now that you said are going to be paid off in 2027, do you know what they were written on, on how many years?
I do not. One of them is at least a 20-year, but our portion is paying off earlier than they, than another portion. I think, go ahead.
We had, we had a 20-year bond?
I, I believe so. I, I will double-check that. Let me double-check that before I say the wrong thing. Maybe I'm mistaken.
I don't recall that one.
Yeah. If it was, it would have been, yeah, maybe it's not. Maybe it's only 15. That would have been the E911 bond that I'm speaking of, and maybe that was only 15.
Yeah. And that's not ours because that's paid through E911.
Right. That portion of it is, yes. Yep.
And what is option two do with us in terms of the, the 3.5? Like, how does that help us fit?
Well, it does, it actually unfortunately doesn't affect that at all because I don't have any of this capital in the operating. So it doesn't help us fill that $1.6 million hole that we have there. It, but it does allow us to do some things we wouldn't otherwise be able to do. That's what it's doing for you.
And we did look, or we need to look at again, obviously, that 1.6 million, if that's what we're looking at reducing.
Yes. And I, I do have responses back from all departments save one. And we can, we can look at those when, when you're ready. I didn't, some of the loose ends, we were just getting wrapped up this morning, so I don't necessarily have it for you right now. I, it doesn't fill that hole, I guess.
No, but I knew when we looked at it, and obviously there were decisions like the board needed to make or agree with or not. Well, I mean, even on the suggestions.
Oh, yeah, all of them, yeah.
There was 1.6 that we needed, you said was the hole.
Yes.
Even that identified, we left us with like 542 that we really were looking at, if we took those suggestions.
You did all of them.
If we did those in more, that reduces out even more, so.
Exactly. Yep. The salary, all the salary changes that you voted on Thursday, I think it only changed that gap down to 1.607 from 1.617. Because some of the, some of the decisions you made were a little higher than what we were guessing. We've been forecasted perfectly. So, so we do, we are still looking at 1.6 million, sadly.
So, yeah, 1.6, but without, that's without any of those reductions.
Before any...
So we're not, we're looking at that, but just that we haven't said, yes, cut it.
Yes, yes, right.
And those were things like, I know, we talked just briefly about funding other organizations and that type of thing. And, you know, maybe this is the year, unfortunately, but this is the year we, we focus on us.
Right.
And first, at least. And that'll be board discussion or however we want to go about that, too. But to go through those items, yeah, much easier to look at 500,000 than a million six. And quite honestly, to ask our departments to look internally into their budgets first when we have other options and things like that, I thought one of the, and this is just kind of a wild one, but we remember, earlier in the year when we had our PD-CM meeting, and we talked about one of the things that we maybe didn't need, and it was pollution insurance, just as an item to look into. And we had met after the board meeting and had some discussion on that, that that had been done at a time when we had the 2008 or whatever flood, and the, we had barrels of things that had floated around. And that was kind of, the staff talked to that, that that wasn't a concern or an issue anymore, that had been addressed. And I think we just ran out of time to follow up on that. But things like that or areas, maybe we can consider, too. So anything we can come up with that, that takes a look at that, I think, helpful.
Yeah, maybe another piece that I, I feel comfortable with, and I've tried with a few, but we've got that payroll adjustment pool. I know that we've got some positions that haven't been filled in a long time. I don't know that we've got the time or organizational bandwidth to go through and, and sort of do a full audit of each position. Is it, is it a long-term vacancy? Is it just sort of the, the typical, you know, recycle, or the typical cycle of, of hiring? Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable if we do that payroll adjustment at 1.5 as opposed to staying at one, with, with, you know, an honest statement from the board that in the event that a department does fine and fills that position and it exceeds, and it sort of messes with that number, that we're still going to support that role. But from a budgetary side, I think it can help us get under that dollar amount. You know, we need to get down 1.6. Helps, it helps towards that number. And it ensures that we're not overtaxing, which is, I think, a concern for all of us.
Sure. Is there any, do we have any thoughts, Michelle, or any ideas on, you know, for the last, well, we said since 12 or 13, we've added to our reserves every year? Is there any thoughts or projections or estimates on where we might be at the end of this year? Because I don't think that's been calculated into any overages or...
Well, I think that I gave you that at our last...
So what, yes.
I didn't, I don't have that sheet here, but...
Okay, just...
I had, you have already made some commitments this year that are about 2 million.
Yes.
I haven't analyzed every single account and timing of when bills come in, but interest revenue continues to be high. And we know our vacancies, however, I do, we will need to revisit the vacancies because the, the salary portion of that, and I meant to get that written down, is only about 700,000. So while it's tempting to just increase that and say we've, you know, we'll fix it, I don't know that that works. It, that is very dependent on what all else, what other decisions are made in this process. But anyway, I think that the interest and maybe some other savings will offset that 2 million that has already been committed for this year. I don't know yet that there'll be even more. There could be.
No, I just wondered, interest being one, and yeah, what we end up with reserves and if we do.
Yes. I would hope there will still be some increase, probably smaller, but yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So you had a timeline you were trying to meet, I know, with us or working with us on getting some things done for this.
Yeah. Because we, so the depart, it's kind of interesting. The new tax law requires us to provide some information to the department management by March 15. However, the department of management has asked that we actually do it by March 5 to give the auditor's office more time to provide these statements that they have to mail out to all taxpayers. So, and I also, honestly, I guess I'm going to say, I think, and I haven't really asked everyone, but I would think your departments would probably also prefer we just make those decisions and we don't, we don't all have to sit around and worry about it for the next six weeks. So I had hoped we would be able to wrap up those decisions this week so that we can upload what we do think our tax rate will be. And we do, we still do have to go through two hearings. Things can be cut after that. What's different about this year is that our really big hole, it isn't a tax increase we're working down. It's a cap that we can't exceed, hole that we're trying to fill. So it actually could increase taxes if, you know, if we, depending on some decisions we choose to make. So I think it would be really helpful if we could pretty much have that wrapped up this week. I don't know how you're feeling about that, but I think possibly, well, today, I, I think I can, I could provide you with the updated information from the departments. And what, what I asked for them to do, and they may or may not have interpreted it the way it was intended, but, you know, I, I just wanted them to tell you the impacts of what would happen or what they have to do if you, if their budget were reduced by that person. So you'll have a kind of menu of choices, I think. That's what I'm envisioning it as of, to, to choose which items you want to do and which you don't.
I guess, preparing for the next session, a couple of things just to look at for, just, just for our menu of options of the, the deputy funding, how much of that is on the rural levy and how much of that is on the, on the general levy, and whether altering that ratio frees up a little bit more in that 3.5 for us. That's the other thing is looking at, at the, at the hole and distinguishing between how much of that is, is salaries and benefits and how much of that is other operational. I generally agree with you on the, the philosophy of not wanting to use one-time money for, for operational expenses, but I guess I'm a little more open on operational things that are, that are more projects than, than the operational costs that's related to salaries and benefits, if that makes sense.
It does. I honestly am not sure. I don't know that I can determine how much is for projects. The, the list that I shared with you, the days are all blending together. I don't know if it was Tuesday or Thursday now. But what I gave you was non-personnel increases. I wouldn't necessarily call them projects, right?
Yeah, that's, I don't think project's the right term.
Yeah. It, so, so that, that's how I started looking at it. Because as a, I guess I'm not really department head, but as a staff person, I, I think most of us probably hope to keep our people before we do other things. But, but you have to watch that, too, because it doesn't do any good to have people if you can't put fuel in their car or, you know, don't impose these mail bill, right? So I, that's why I created that spreadsheet that I had provided to you with the increases and the non-personnel, because I thought you would want to start there. I certainly wanted to start there to see what's in there. Is there anything we, we can decide to live without? And that, that was the genesis of what I gave you, and that's kind of where some of those suggestions I had came from. I'm certainly not an expert in the department's operations. That's why, you know, you have all the department heads and elected officials. But I, that's why I just tried to give you some suggestions or some things to ask the departments about, you know? And now we've provided you some information that will hopefully give you more options to consider.
Now, this list, and I could be wrong, this isn't an all-inclusive list of these non-staff increase requests and, and the types of things we could be looking at in addition to what that list was the other day?
There could be more things. That is a complete list of the increases that were in the budget.
Increases only, okay.
It is complete. But, yeah, there's always, there are always alternatives. And some of our departments have done a great job of looking at things and giving you alternatives to think about. So I will get that information out to you.
Okay, thank you.
Are we able to get a projection on interest or earning on monies?
Well, I've met with Linda Hinsman, the treasurer, and Billy Heath, her finance supervisor, several times. So, yeah, I think we, we feel confident. But the thing is, maybe the biggest wild card in it is really the ARPA funding. So as I project what construction will hopefully occur in 2025, I have that booked in like a $12 million right now. So that's a lot of money that we're taking out of our, you know, our bank balance that's currently crediting interest to the general fund. So that's going to dwindle.
It's going to dwindle, but I anticipate it's going to be better than expected. We just don't know what the future holds because it has been better than expected over the past two to three months, correct?
Oh, it has. For the, especially the last year, interest rates have really gone up. But we are seeing, just spoke to Billy yesterday, some CDs that are renewing. The rates are coming down. We, we had a few, we hit at 5%. They're now starting to fall. Not a lot, you know, still in the fours. But I, yeah, unfortunately, there was a seminar I wanted to listen to last Thursday, and we, I didn't, I didn't get to happy here quick enough because they were going to talk about some of the interest rate forecasts. But everything that I've seen so far is still indicating the expectation is those for, to decline some in '25. So I have pushed it up. I, I suspect there might be a little wiggle room there. I think that Billy and Linda Hinsman are reluctant, you know, that they don't, they don't want to overpromise, which I totally understand. And they have no control over how fast we spend money. So, you know, there's variables that no one controls in there. And, yeah, there's some, I have a different idea, too, that I'm working on about the rural fund, but... but I'll, I'll get to you when I have it pushed out a little bit more.
By Thursday, we need to set what that, kind of that maximum levy type of thing, have the information that we want for that. But because, so then we can always reduce that number, right? But we don't want to have anything we add to at that point. Does that give you?
Right, you won't be able to add to the taxes at that point. But as I said, I'm guessing the departments would probably just assume we're done. If we're not, we're not.
Yeah. So we need to make decisions on staffing on Thursday?
Yeah, as many things as we're able to.
All right, because I assume we'll probably be close to being prepared for that.
Yeah.
And we're going to review the non-staff increases again and look for some places that we can.
Yep.
Cut there first or change it.
And we can certainly look at capital. I did, I did provide the summary to you again if you want to look at capital requests.
Oh, yeah, I did have some questions on that. Or we can wait till then to do it, I was going to ask you too.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine.
I'm fine.
Controlling today, so.
I was, I was just curious, I don't know if we've had any discussion on, I saw on the board office area specifically, I guess the $100,000 that's in that.
Yeah. Yeah, we were saying we were going to get an email out to you, but I don't think that's happened. That's, we think that whole area, there's some, there's several ideas out there. One of them involves moving information technology across the hall and maybe another department could be relocated to the area where they are. And if we could reorganize that whole area, then the, the board admin aid, I think, could also help another department. So it gains efficiencies in staffing, which is probably something I'm most excited about, and provide enough offices for, because we, we are short one in our area if we add a position. So that's the intent of that, is to provide enough room, but also to be able to leverage, I guess, our staff well.
And to have 100,000 in this year's budget is?
Like design, that would be to figure out what we're going to do. And then the, the rest of it is really construction. And those are really rough estimates. Rory can explain those better than I can, probably.
Was, Rory, are you still here?
He's hiding around the corner.
I never have like that corner, that curtain roll. I know, we did this in joking the other day when HR, because I saw that budget for HR was 21, 31,000. And we knew there was a copier in there. And the 21, 25,000, I think I said, what was that? And we talked about, or somebody commented about an exit door. And my comment to you was, I can knock a hole in that wall for a lot less than 25,000 as long as you could come in and do the rest. Is that a high number or?
I, I believe that is a high number. I believe we could accomplish that for a lot less. We, in fact, we looked at doing a door earlier this year in the board supervisors' office going into a conference room. And I want to say that came back at about $6,000. One thought that I had, if we were to move forward with that, we could go in the HR conference room into the attorney's hallway. There's a spot right there where I could put a doorway. So I'm, I'm thinking, you know, just under 10,000 would probably be sufficient for that.
I was just thinking, looking at ways that we can save, and when it's kind of ones that pop out to us, then it's like, let's take a look at some of these that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, thank you.
Well, I didn't really talk about that in my budget. And initially was kind of more just like, there's been talks of us, if IT, you know, after like the recorders remodel, all that, we maybe would go up to second floor. And I said, well, even if we don't go to second floor, I'd like a second exit. And the way that we've kind of restructured some things with our HR intern, we've been able to absorb, you know, or use existing desks, which have been great. What we still struggle with as the restructure, where I have now both Anna and Cherry doing FMLA, for example, or, you know, ADA, that, that space that Anna is in is not very private. And so that was kind of, so that, it was high in the idea that, you know, if there was any opportunities, if we stay downstairs, obviously going up to IT, those are all separate offices and that wouldn't necessarily be needed, but that would be a different kind of light remodel. But, so it was very rough, just thrown in there. It wasn't meant 25,000 to be one door. It was just like, well, if I could get a second exit, just for safety, security reasons or some other, you know, way from our, our regular door entrance, that was just the idea. But I think initially it was kind of thought that we might end up upstairs, but we may not, so. Which then that would just pretty much remove that 25,000.
Depending on timing, not that, like I said, it's not important to have security, but yeah. Okay, thank you. And I, this is just a question, Michelle, that I didn't, I looked back in the VA budget and didn't see, but the 4,000 that was under VA, I wasn't sure what that was for.
It's a copier.
Oh, that was a copier?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I think some of those departments that went early on, we neglected to talk about the capital, and I'm sorry about that.
That's okay, I just thought when I saw it, I was kind of surprised that, I was like, who put that before? Okay, makes sense.
Departments really did try to do the five-year thought process, I think. And so that's why you're seeing something like that popping on.
Yeah, just the changes and things we've kind of had to go through for this year makes this year kind of that primary focus for right now anyway.
Yeah, right.
Looking at the others, maybe as we strategic plan.
Is there anything else you wanted to cover today's? All right.
Saying you're thinking of, I was going to say, is there a thought there? No, not that can't wait till Thursday?
So Thursday, be prepared for such a pretty long session. Stay until we get it done.
Do we need more sheets or is there anything you can think of more to send out to us sooner or later?
What I've done is add another column to this worksheet with the non-personnel changes, which, I don't know. I'll look at that, maybe I'll reformat that. But I kind of tried to put their responses, but it, it gets very, it's kind of long, so.
Sooner the better, just because it helps us.
For you to see them all in one place than two separate documents is why I was, that was my original thought anyway. Yeah, and I, like I said, I had a couple that we were still confirming this morning. That's why I wasn't, I haven't given it to you today, but I should be able to get it out to you today.
Yeah, even if sending the emails or something, something that's helpful to us to see what they were looking at cutting. Because I think, yeah, our budgets are usually pretty lean, so I know some of those.
This has not been an easy process. And I, I, I knew it wouldn't be. I tried, oh, I tried really hard to come up with other suggestions so we didn't have to go there and. I got to a million, that's all I could get to.
What did the 3%, when, when you asked for 3% cuts? What did, what was that total then to end up with? Not that they said, I, I can't make three or I, here's one or whatever. What, what would that have?
If everything would have been comeback, I think it was probably about 1.3. I'm not at that total, I don't know exactly what it is, but we aren't.
I was just curious when we asked.
Yeah, it's much lower than that.
Well, if we need less than 500,000, we're better off too, so we'll see. Thank you.
All right, well, any reports or information from the board?
Only the one I wanted to let all the board know that I submitted the information and like, we'll copy you, I thought I didn't do that, to UNI's IDM for this strategic planning information. And they were appreciative to get that since they didn't have time to do kind of like the come to the meeting. I did ask them, kind of followed up with that to say too, we understood that you weren't going to be available till May to even come to do anything for us. So could you send us back something like a written response or something of what they'd propose? If they could try to do that. So as soon as I hear that, I'll forward that to you, so we'll see where.
Very good. Any other reports or information? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
I'll move, second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.